Biggest thing that I want to do. Okay, see, and uh, it'll be another agenda, but that's okay. This is what's really been happening to me.
Did you leave the tag?
Might answer a lot of your questions.
Did you write tag on both of them?
There was no legend on the.
Did you?
Why would I do that?
I don't know. I just came back from a meeting and there was a posting note.
I was in, I was in, grabbed my stuff.
Yeah, you were in some type of, yeah, I was there.
Now two thirty-ish?
Like, hover all ready.
Okay.
I assumed it was one of the two.
Right.
To be fair, it was not with the posting notes from my desk, so it would have to be somebody who brought their own posting.
And which is on now? It's probably either R fifty or seventy.
I gotta figure out who tagged that one.
Fifth, Mr. Young, Fifth Street, is that currently zoned R fifty?
R fifty.
Depends what part of Fifth Street, so the first block close to Main Street is already multi.
Multi-use.
Um, not multi-use, mixed-use.
Mixed-use, right.
And then the second block is, I believe, R fifty is.
That's where I thought you were, yeah.
Where's the first block?
You're in the very, you're the closest.
Well.
Is there a street between you?
There's an alley.
Between us.
Carly, are you the full country?
Or? I have a map.
No, I'm not.
We're two, three houses, two, or two houses from, not three houses from Orchard.
But on the east side of the alley, then you're still R fifty.
Struggling.
Since everything west of the alley is mixed-use at the moment.
Is that where we get to where we're talking about?
There are.
I've seen you or something.
Yes. I just said where you were. I've got research, I've got a lot of readers, so help me.
You know? Just talking.
Put him over coffee. I got everything. Just in case I run into something. Yes.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Glad you made it.
You're one of these, sir? You wanna?
No, yesterday I was down.
These three alleys here?
Oh.
Fair.
Yeah, we're one of those, we're one of those streets.
Um, it looks like you're currently zoned R two F, so two families, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Guess the map's a lot faster.
Bye.
How are you?
Hey.
How are you?
Good.
So, in the alley?
So, you don't like singing, but so?
Yeah, well, I always, I always have a day of going on a fun, but, and then I find, so I get, I get my time, I just get in the shop, what do I do for that?
Who, I'm sorry?
No, 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 no. No, I'm just trying to.
Who, I'm sorry?
No, 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 no. No, I'm just trying to.
We, Sherry, nice and real good. So. Yes. I am voting for the master.
They just talked about the Y. Yeah, there's a Y dining, but this was AAU because I think it was in August. Right. But here's the part that I nailed. Yes, I saw that. That's exactly what I needed. They were looking for.
Can I, can I explain why?
What's the, so?
Anyways, so.
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 I guess, I guess.
When you build this, not with some, but with kind of like, there's a, there's a soapy hole.
Yeah. It was two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's hard flying, you know, and flying also, it doesn't fare.
They have all of these issues with the sun.
No good news, guys.
But not true. That is looking at the sun. There's, there's, there's.
It's true.
And there was engagements, there was rent, there was, there was some versions, I mean, and, and sales things and things, but it was just.
I guess he must be told that this year is.
You know.
Yeah.
All these women never engaged.
Oh, yeah, they, some. It's almost as old as my K O L. Thank you.
Oh, that's okay. Oh, that's okay.
Alright. Well, I'm sorry, I'm trying to squeeze in. I mean, I'm sure it does. Those are challenges.
Yeah. I lost her some. Right.
I love it, you give it a little more work.
Unfortunately, having some.
Drone of, I think, good close handle. Oh, I didn't imagine. That's cool. I mean, you know, it's like, you know, the most sick man, you know, thirty days in a row, sixty days.
Right.
So, we're supposed to prefer that.
Mm-hmm.
But we're buying from the, the living.
Yeah.
Apparently, uh, even turned worse, I'm sure they'll make it to the.
Who is? Is that what's happening in the history?
Stresser today, they're trying to, they're trying to get on Sunday early, so it doesn't happen. So.
They kill.
Probably.
Cause it's much.
I mean, they came to turn, they, they, we got the estate, but we had a, you know, outstanding purchase contract.
Right.
Yeah.
There's always something.
I mean, like, I'm sorry for that.
Yeah.
Shouldn't have been stressful.
Yeah.
Probably pretty sure they're gonna leave off a furniture, you know.
Oh, really? Is that good?
That first time was very, 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 very tricky. I'm now married up.
That's what I said, I think, a little bit of frustration.
Make some of my money back. Pay off my mortgage, like, I guess.
Are you in here?
No, so I'm telling you, we're supposed to call it Thursday, but there's drama. Oh. Really?
It's a.
We went to their council meeting last week on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Cause they're not, same night as us. And, uh. Pass it. On four. Uh, maybe like eight or less of.
Yeah.
Six of them will probably be, a lot of them would have gone out of the contract yet, just put on home. The council, if you didn't have the contract.
The good news is it's not a big house. Like a long-term placeholder?
Yeah. But it was also late at dark gray versus. They're probably three days now. And on March. Oh, I gotta have it, yeah. This is the, you know, why, what's the?
I don't know. I've got this only, I have something.
Also have many states. Oh, okay.
A lot of business.
So the dark gray, uh, Main Street Center.
I don't know, I don't know if you're extracting funds out of those.
Well, Main Street Center?
I think.
They're about to.
Do you wanna do the slide before?
Well.
That's the problem. Or do you wanna wait for, to do it when we discuss the resolution?
I haven't inserted in the PowerPoint after, cause I don't know when you wanna give the video, whatever you'd ask. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a whole lot of this work you can do on this, you know, however.
Are you sure? Yep. That's what I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think people hope that Biden might move the city for the more than nothing. What he did. To Austria, then he was a, he was a. Yeah. There's, there's a lot more he could have done. And from the inside, so.
Well, yeah, right.
And for the fortune.
Yeah. Yeah. Man, you're.
Thank you. I don't know, why do you know what I did about that? Can you say? You know, so much. That's what I'm saying. I don't know. I don't know what I did about that. Can you say? You know, so much. I don't know. 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 I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
Are you in here?
No, so I'm telling you, we're supposed to call it Thursday, but there's drama. Oh. Really?
It's a.
We went to their, uh, council meeting last week on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Cause they're not, same night as us. And, uh. Pass it. On four. Uh, maybe like eight or less of.
Yeah.
Six of them will probably be, a lot of them would have gone out of the contract yet, just put on home. The council, if you didn't have the contract.
The good news is it's not a big house. Like a long-term placeholder?
Yeah. But it was also late at dark gray versus. They're probably three days now. And on March. What did the two ever grade? I gotta have it, yeah. This is the, you know, why, what's the?
I don't know. I've got this only, I have something.
Also have many states. Oh, okay. What are your?
What a business.
So the dark gray, uh, Main Street Center.
I, I don't know, I don't know if you're extracting funds out of those.
Well, Main Street Center?
I think. Do you wanna do the slide before?
Well.
That's the problem. Or do you wanna wait for, to do it when we discuss the resolution?
I haven't inserted in the PowerPoint after, cause I don't know when you wanna give the video, whatever you'd ask. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a whole lot of this work you can do on this, you know, however.
Are you sure? Yep. That's what I mean. Yeah.
I think people hope that Biden might move the city for the more than nothing. What he did. To Austria, then he was a, he was a. Yeah. There's, there's a lot more he could have done. And from the inside, so.
Well, yeah, right.
And for the fortune.
Yeah. 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 I don't know. I don't know if you're extracting funds out of those. Yeah. I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah. I don't know. There's a lot more he could have done. And from the inside, so.
Well, yeah, right.
And for the fortune.
Yeah. I don't know. Man, you're.
Thank you. I don't know, why do you know what I did about that? Can you say? You know, so much. That's what I'm saying. I'm going to. Trying to. I'm trying to. 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 Trying to.
I haven't inserted in the PowerPoint after, cause I don't know when you wanna give the video, whatever you'd ask. Yeah. I have it inserted in the PowerPoint after, cause I don't know when you wanna give the video, whatever you'd ask. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a whole lot of this work you can do on this, you know, however.
Are you sure? Yep. That's what I mean. Yeah.
I think people hope that Biden might move the city for the more than nothing. What he did. To Austria, then he was a, he was a. Yeah. There's, there's a lot more he could have done. And from the inside, so.
Well, yeah, right.
And for the fortune.
Yeah. I don't know.
There's a lot more he could have done. And from the inside, so.
Well, yeah, right. I mean, I mean, I think people hope that Biden might move the city for the more than nothing.
What he did. To Austria, then he was a, he was a. Yeah. There's, there's a lot more he could have done. And from the inside, so.
Well, yeah, right.
And for the fortune.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's, there's a lot more he could have done. And from the inside, so.
Well, yeah, right.
And for the fortune.
Yeah. 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 There's, there's, there's a lot more he could have done.
And from the inside, so.
Well, yeah, right.
And for the fortune.
Yeah. 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 I don't know. Man, you're.
Thank you. I don't know. Why do you know what I did about that? Can you say? You know, so much. That's what I'm saying. 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 That's what I'm saying.
I think you got your moniker in here?
I hope it's, oh, I would love a moniker.
I know what we should do, we should have the chief follow them all, just to make sure they do safely operate.
Yeah, it's funny that, um, I can actually see, like, lights for driving better than people like this, like, yeah.
That's weird.
All-temperance.
Jacobson. Oh, you need. Yeah.
Well, that's the thing, you know, um, hobby.
You couldn't see, you couldn't see the graphics on it. Just a.
Mr. and Mrs. Gundry. Yeah. Jamie McLeister, it's been forever, how are you guys doing?
We're good, haven't seen you for a long time.
I know, right? It's been a couple of years.
Yeah.
Well, his dad has injuries to throw, so he, uh, he's had a stroke and he's got dementia, so it's, uh, yeah, so it's not a good situation.
His dad was in Fordham's class.
Well, I didn't realize you guys were the same class, so, I just remember from, you know, the boat store, so, you know, so. Yeah. That's interesting.
You're in council?
Yeah.
Good, how about yourself? Yes or no?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. That's all, that's my parting words of advice, but thank you so much for coming, so.
Well, our homes are on the line.
Yeah.
A lot of us were remembered though.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Oh, wait, no, this, oh. Yeah. And then different districts, so it's like. Where are they? Three.
It's all, it's all, it's all.
It's a little, it's a little. Yeah.
It's all the same.
Yeah.
It's all the same. Which is good. Yeah, nice guitar. Oh, yeah. That's good. Yeah. They should be out. Everything you guys hear, so. That's all, that's my parting words of advice, but thank you so much for coming, so.
Well, our homes are on the line.
Yeah.
A lot of us were remembered though.
Good to see you.
Oh, wait, no, this, oh. Yeah. Yeah. 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 Oh, wait, no, this, oh. 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 Yeah. 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 Oh, yeah, I really like that. Yeah. And there's Sue. Good. And then different districts, so it's like. Where are they? Three.
It's all, it's all, it's all.
It's a little, it's a little. Remember this a little.
It's all the same.
Yeah.
It's all the same, which is good. Yeah. Nice guitar. Oh, yeah, guitar. All that, that's good.
Yeah. Okay. I'm trying to. Yeah. Okay. I'm trying to. Yeah. 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 That's so. Thank you. Yeah. 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 Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. My husband's like, getting divorced. And I was like, she's like, you're all fucked. I was like, there is so much possibility for you now. It took forever, and. Just stuck a couple hours ago. I don't know, and I was like, there's hope. She had to replace the module. Of course. Yeah. No, we haven't been. Hard in the one. Yeah. 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 There's my remarks to counsel about this. In the end. Probably never got all that. Well, we had heaters. Had heaters. Put a couple of heaters. Something like that. Yeah. When did that, when did that happen? Friday night?
It was funny.
She came over Friday night? Saturday morning. Starting to get cold in there.
Yeah. A nice thing to say.
Because art, nothing.
Yeah.
Metheny. Well, I can't. I guess when I called, they're like, Jeff, what? Cause we work in businesses, wouldn't we? Well, oh, the homes there wouldn't. No, I just. Got some info from. Most businesses, I said, so what's that? Well, they're like, we would be several lots, and it's like, so, and what's his, what's his name? He's like, um, well, you know, it's like ten to twenty years, like, that's not, that's not insignificant, like, so you wanna think. Next ten years, kids are going through intermediate school, teenagers, as their neighborhood is slowly disintegrating or fatherized, and we literally have D-bowl across the street from Jamie's. Jamie's. If I have. That puts. Because it's. I mean, it's. Thank you. Very bad. I'm sorry to hear that. Like, I use power. Yeah. Somewhere from somebody who's in B L. Um, I don't, I never turn left on the main, I always go down, um, Charlotte. Whoever did those plans. I got it. Cause remember the sunrise was. Clean bill. And there's no. It's a clean bill.
So it's like, you know what, it's not nice for us.
Yeah, I think Delivian said thank you because his would have really hated us. And I was like.
This is already.
No.
Come on, thanks. Amy and I are on it.
Usually, uh, through a post, where it comes in. If he doesn't do it.
That's the bottom part of. Here's George. That's the bottom part of Senate Street.
Right here is Rosalie's. We're right here. Right. I'm not. Right, most of this is.
This is already.
Already made.
Right, that's Main Street. Yes.
Yeah, I see everything close to like a half a block at least. It's certainly up to this point. The only thing I'm not sure about is there's a few houses right here. I actually tell you where they are.
There's a number of houses.
Right. Yeah, right there on the corner is Mary's house.
These all face on Main Street.
Right. But the zoning goes further back than just the first lot.
I just wondered, that must probably be in with us, but it's not.
Right.
It would take months to happen, which we'd receive lessons to go after it's all this going on. Like, I have.
On Main Street. Yeah, well, I didn't say it was part of that Main Street. I'll tell you this already. Oh, um, yeah, the zoning department also. County just. At your lot, your D I S site.
Yes.
Yeah, they don't touch this.
I'm glad they're the quote I'm putting on the sign out front. Doris.
This isn't. This isn't any.
Yeah, they finally turned that place down.
They were, the girls.
They had a long counter. Yeah, changed that.
Yeah, that's gone. They put in glass walls and created office spaces.
Go ahead, nobody's armed these. I was surprised.
Okay, now call to order the committee of the whole meeting of January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. The time is seven P M. Ben, would you please call the roll?
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member McLeaster?
Here.
Member Waring?
Here.
Member Shroya?
Here.
Member Volt?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Sixth president, member Wirehead has asked.
Motion to excuse member Ward?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's start off with Gerald here.
All right, we have a request from the administration. This is item three A on the agenda to amend the period in which a property may remain a non-conforming use if it is unoccupied. Current ordinance permits. Property to retain its.
Thank you for considering.
Non-conforming use. For. Two years, the administration would like to move that down to twelve. In the belief that the shorter time period will bring these non-conforming properties that are not in use into alignment with our zoning.
You mentioned twelve, twelve months.
Twelve months, I'm sorry, not twelve years, twelve months. So from two years to twelve months, two years to one year. Sounds good. Patrick, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, not really, other than just that, you know, in going out, uh, we think that's our reasonable period of time, twelve months. That the property might be sitting vacant, unused. Two years just really seems to be a stretch today. You know, maybe it was better thirty years ago, took a little longer to kind of maybe move properties. I think it moved fairly quick these days, so I think twelve months is sufficient time to establish a new use.
Jamie, any questions or comments?
No, I think it sounds good.
John?
Not at this time.
Matt?
Two years is, is a long time. Much rather see twelve months.
Stephanie?
Same.
Then I'll take a motion to, or I'll make a motion to have this placed on an agenda for action.
Uh, let me make a motion. Can I have a motion and a second to put item three A to the planning commission?
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to postpone further consideration of item three A until commissions set by codified ordinance, ordinance one-one-eight-one-point-zero-six? Amen. You're right.
Yeah. So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, moving on to four, Stephanie.
Okay, this is just a piece of property that we are looking to acquire. Patrick?
Actually, we're looking to dispose.
Sorry, sorry.
Sorry.
I was getting excited about the other one.
Yeah, so, you know, this is a, a part of the, uh, Dressler well field that's over there. These wells are not used very much anymore due to all the development that is around them. This is on the backside of, you know, what the Fawesnot Junkyard area. And so we think that we have plans to develop a new well at Arrowhead. We've talked about that before. And, uh, this is now, because of all the development that's occurred around there, we have a lot of this acreage has frontage on Dressler. For point of reference, for those that are, uh, in the community trying to figure out where that is, it's like at the foot of the Hall of Fame Bridge. It goes over seventy-seven and beyond the east side of the bridge along Dressler. And, uh, it's a very sought-after area. And we think that, uh, that with disposition of this asset would, would go towards paying for the new, uh, water line and well to, to do at Arrowhead. So talking with our water treatment plant superintendent, uh, we would be in terms with, uh, with, uh, Ohio EPA regarding the amount of capacity that we still have if we were to take this field down. It doesn't pose any concerns to us. We have an overabundance of capacity at our plant.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, may we move to put it on the agenda, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And, um, moving on to utilities, Jamie, formerly rubbish.
Formerly, formerly rubbish, depending on who you ask, it might still be. Um, so what we have here is this is an ordinance, um, to work with the Stark County Commissioners, um, outside of the city, North Canton, at Pittsburgh and Mount Pleasant, um, it's gonna be a roundabout. And so at the time when they did get the street to put the roundabout in, we want to come in and, uh, work with them and replace some water pipes at the same time. It alleviates costs on our end to, to go in and access those and replace those pipes when they're already accessing them. So that's the, uh, why behind the why on this. And, uh, Patrick, any other comments on that?
I'm just saying, it's something that we routinely do. We did this, uh, on the first phase of the, uh, roundabout that is at, uh, Orion and Pittsburgh. We, you know, a year or so ago, worked with commissioners through this, uh, and the county engineer's office to relocate our water lines while they dug up that road. That way we don't have to replace the road. And so this is their next phase and we're just going along with them. We did the same down at Everhard and Whipple. When they redid that from the railroad tracks to Whipple, uh, we relocated our lines at that time.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, I would, uh, move that we, uh, put item five A to the council agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I will take a motion to adjourn.
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned from the committee of the whole. Uh, we're gonna take a short break and then we're gonna start the regular city council meeting. Did everybody get, uh, F A Q that was outside on the coffee table?
An extra, Matt?
What's that?
You have an extra? Or is it still on the table?
We should, we can get some extras.
Matt's become our tough guy.
I now call to order the city council meeting of January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. The time is seven oh nine P M. Opening prayer, Jamie.
Right? He's right? Let us pray. Lord, make us an instrument of your peace. Where uncivil words prevail, show us how to model love. Help us remember the God-given dignity of all and invite others to do the same. Show us how to build bridges and not walls and see first what unites us rather than how we diverge. Let us seek to understand before asking to be understood. Give us listening hearts filled with empathy and compassion. May we be clear in sharing our own positions in respectful and civil in discussing those of others. Lord, help us to imitate your compassion and mercy. Make us instruments of your peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands, one nation, under your command, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ben, would you please call the roll? Member Orr?
Here.
Member Volt?
Here.
Member Shroya?
Here.
Member Waring?
Here.
Member McLeaster?
Here.
Member Matheny?
Here.
Sixth president, member Wirehead has asked.
Motion to excuse member Ward?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, can I have a motion and a second to approve as presented? Minutes from the January ninth committee of the whole and city council and chapter seven oh seven established by ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-twenty-two.
Revolt moves? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so a couple of housekeeping issues before we start, uh, recognition of the public here. I had an eye procedure done, so I'm not winking at you when I close my eye. I'm just addressing my eye, so I want to get that out of the way. So we're going to split it up into two sessions. We're going to have people that want to talk about, um, things on the master plan, specifically the zoning. And, uh, that will be second. First, we'll have people up that want to talk about other issues that are on the legislative agenda only, meaning what you see before you in the outline of the regular city council meeting. So you should have all, uh, seen a, an F A Q about the zoning and the master plan. I encourage you to look at that before you speak. Some of your questions may be answered on that. Our forum here is not a debate going back and forth. You'll, you'll go to the podium, you'll make your statement after you say your name and your address. And then we will address you and take down the questions and address it after that. So I just ask you, you follow the rules. They're gonna be on both sides of the screen right here. Each of you, we will be given five minutes. This will serve as the only warning. And, um, any violation of the rules is an ejection from the premises. We have these rules because of issues in the past. So with that being said, um, those wanting to speak about legislative items on the agenda that are not on the master plan, please, uh, approach the podium.
I'd like to speak about resolution twelve there. But I don't want to go out of order here.
Uh. Yeah, that's the master.
That's the master plan?
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I don't want to be thrown out again this week. You threw me out two weeks ago.
I don't want to kick you out either, bud.
I think you enjoy it, but can I speak now?
Do we need this back?
You're, you're, you're bordering on, on repeating that, so. Okay, so anyone wanting to speak about the master plan, uh, please approach.
Is that me?
Would you like to speak about the master plan?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Chuck Osborne, three oh seven Fairview Street, southeast, North Canton, Ohio. North Canton's twenty-twenty-three master plan to change residentially zoned neighborhoods to commercial zoning will destroy well-maintained homes in peaceful neighborhoods and drive those neighborhoods into extinction. This is an outright assault on North Canton citizens in these targeted areas. Suffice it to say that I am totally opposed to the twenty-twenty-three master plan embraced by city council at the January ninth, twenty-twenty-three committee of the whole meeting. Stunningly, there was not a single member of council who dared to question any aspect of the master plan. Why is that? How many of you would be concerned or more accurately angry to learn that your elected representative not only did not question the rezoning proposal, but gleefully supported the actions of government to rezone your neighborhood into extinction? I am astonished that this city's elected representatives seek to selectively wipe off the map a hundred homes in our community. The city of North Canton is a veteran community. Its citizens want peace and tranquility in their neighborhoods. Senior citizens make up twenty-four percent of the population, more than many other communities in this local area. The twenty-twenty-three master plan seeks to undo that peace and tranquility that we have long enjoyed. If many of you desire a more exciting lifestyle, consider a move to Columbus or Cleveland. How more widespread do we need liquor than what we already have? I am aware that council president Shroya and ward council one member McLeaster like to dabble in the craft beer industry. I ask that they not let their personal and business interests affect how they represent their constituents. On one of my research trips to the National Archives years ago, I was able to collect over a hundred pages of my maternal great-grandfather's Civil War records. As a result of his service, he collected a pension. Annually, to continue to receive that pension, a surgeon would have to attest that that pensioner had no vicious habits, referring to drinking and smoking. I was taught growing up that drinking to excess.
Stick to the topic, please. I'm not gonna warn you again.
This is all with my topic.
Where is liquor on this agenda?
It's in the master plan. You want to get rid of the, the city being dry.
Okay.
I was taught that growing up that drinking to excess was bad. And yet this master plan seeks to eliminate what is described as North Canton's dry city problem. It's not a problem. Citizens should continue to vote on liquor permits in their precinct. We all know that gambling is a vice, yet we know, we see it legalized and we are bombarded with solicitations to gamble. With the mindset of city officials reflected in this master plan, North Canton could have gambling and all of its liquor establishments the plan hopes to bring to our community. I am girding myself for the announcement of a casino at the Hoover District. The master plan speaks to the topic of strategic land banking. Taxpayers pay taxes for city services not to allow City Hall to play in the commercial real estate market and tie up millions of tax dollars. One would think that after the city's failed efforts to lure Debold to the former Kmart property, along with the added spending of a million dollars for heavily mined and industrial contaminated property, that the city would not include land banking in the master plan. Anyone who drafted this master plan does not know North Canton, nor are they thinking of its citizenry. This twenty-twenty-three master plan on the legislative calendar tonight as resolution twelve-twenty-three should be dead on arrival. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else wanting to address council?
Jeff Jones, two nineteen Sixth Street, Northeast. I've studied the master plan and I've looked at the school plan and some of the road changes, that kind of thing. And, um, I've been trying to piece it together and it, I think this is really what was just mentioned. But how does this affect the character of the, the community is? I'm, I'm trying to figure out where this leads us as a community. So it occurs to me, the piece that I'm missing is, uh, I understand, well, let's start with, I understand the, the goals are common goals, economic development, uh, a vibrant community. And, you know, you'd expect from any small community or, or bedroom community like we have. The other piece then is the, the master plan that's telling us, giving us some, some direction on how to get there. I'm missing the piece that puts that together, which I think the best term for is a, a vision. And then what I don't understand is what we're trying to attract. Are we, are we, uh, attracting people from outside the community? Are we attracting people to buy, to build and buy homes and, and upgrade the, uh, the housing stock and bring more families into the community? You know, I see in the school plan that that looks like a, an expansion of, of the community. The way with the, the building of these new schools that we're anticipating more families to move in somehow. It's not clear to me how that ties back to the master plan. And, uh, where those people come from, uh, where they're going to live. That. So, so yes, it really, to me, it comes down to linking that with the, a vision of, are we bringing in, uh, community family restaurants? Are we bringing in at the other end of the spectrum, uh, gambling facilities and bars? I don't know. But, uh, it seems pretty open-ended, uh, to let the community evolve in some way without, without some controls over that, or at least a vision on what we're trying to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Next.
Hi, Sherri Castor, two forty-one Sixth Street, Northeast. I'm in the affected zone of one of the rezoning properties.
Wait, I'm sorry, ma'am. You're gonna have to speak up so I can hear what you're saying, please.
Two forty-one Sixth Street, Northeast. I'm in the effect, one of the affected zones. Um, I, uh, I appreciate all the work that's been done from this, from your elected officials, from the city. But most of my neighbors are here. And we learned about this master plan just two weeks ago. So I appreciate all the work to be, and I do want to go off of what Jeff says. I don't see the vision changing. I don't see where you guys want to go with this other than let Debold keep growing, which we've had construction for, I don't know, twenty months now behind us. So it, it frustrates us as homeowners. We have a wonderful area of a community. We have a wonderful, except for Park Street needing to be curved and gutted and paved and some sidewalks for people to walk on. Everybody goes through now to the new park. It's wonderful. And for you to, to, to put and allow this to be put in here without, the only thing that angers me about what Chuck Osborne said was you didn't even, nobody even questioned anything. There was no comments or talk about it. It's until you want to have a rezoning meeting for us and then let us all fight then? That's, that's sort of sad to hear. And, and you can tell me I'm wrong. However, we have a great community and I don't want to see that broken up. And so I'm gonna stand here with all of my neighbors and continue to fight for my rezoning area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask questions?
No.
I mean, can I? So there's no.
Can make a statement. You can, before and after, you can ask questions, but it's, it's a statement and we can answer.
To clarify, you can ask questions, we just won't answer them.
Right, we just, there's no.
That's okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just would like to put those on record.
Sure.
Would someone get back to me on?
Yeah.
Oh, great. Perfect.
Yeah, I don't really have a comment to make one way or the other. I just have some questions.
I need your names, sir, please.
Robert Nickel, four oh three Cole Avenue Southwest. I live on that strip of homes on, right behind St. Paul's. And I've lived there for thirty years. It's been a great neighborhood. Raised my son there. I've always said I've got the best backyard in North Canton. So I have some, I just have about seven questions and. Let me read them. One is, will, when will these zoning changes actually become effective? Will it be this year, next year? Basically a timeframe on that. Uh, were there any studies done on the impact of property values? Zoning from, you know, residential two-story to, to commercial? What is the foreseeable timeframe for commercial development in our neighborhood? And what kind of development is targeted? Are we talking about something like you would see in Hudson, one first in Maine? Which, um, I think is a beautiful place, but is that really what we're talking about? Because when I look at North Canton, I see one area where you've actually got land that isn't developed. And it's where the junior high school is. I know there's talk now about, uh, where they're going to rebuild that. I don't know if that's been decided or not. But that location, the property. Whitworth Park on the east, which is what you're talking about, rezoning commercial, is certainly develop, land is developed, and of course, the homes that we have, we're right in the middle of it. So it seems to me that's the real area for growth. So what kind of development are you talking about? Is, you're talking about a grocery store or retail? I don't know. I mean, that's one thing that I was just a little bit confused on. Are there any projects currently under consideration? And when commercial development moves forward, will these properties be purchased by the city in your land banking efforts? Or will they be purchased by developers? So I'm not sure, you know, where you go there. That's kind of a concern, because, you know, once these homes are re-zoned commercial, can you then turn around and sell them as residential properties? Does that actually limit the homeowners to whom they can sell those homes to? I think that's a big concern for everybody that's kind of in the mix all over town where this is, you know, planned. So that would, I think there's one more question than I have that was thrown at me. Yeah, basically, can I sell my home as a residential property? I'm not sure that banks will allow a residential loan on commercial property, so that could be a problem. And also, does this affect rental or non-owner occupied homes? So those would be my questions. Primarily is, how does this financially impact us? I mean, if you're talking about a situation where my home's currently market value, whatever it might be, and it hasn't been on the market for over 30 years, there's only been three families that have lived in the home that I live in, and I've been there 30 years, and the house was built in 1926. So it's been, it's been a great neighborhood. But if you're talking about, you know, you can sell your house, and you're going to make a fortune on it because it's zoned commercial, well, that's one thing. But is that the case? And I think that's the concern probably for a lot of people in here, is how's that going to affect us financially, let alone our neighborhood that we love and that we live in? So that's about it. I don't really have any comment. Actually, I will say one thing. I think, I do commend you on improving the city of North Canton, making it more walkable, more livable. I guess it's just a matter of how you go about doing it. And that's my main concern. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzanne Cecil, 204 Fifth Street Northeast. I'd like to go off of what the last two said, and recognize that the council has really done a lot of great things for our community. The park, I mean, there's been a lot of great improvements since Mayor Wilder took over. But the rezoning is really what I want to focus on. I feel like a lot of people say, oh, we're not taking your house, we're not taking your house. I want to be very clear that none of us here tonight are worried that our houses are being taken. We are here solely because we do not want mixed zoning in our neighborhoods. When I look at the fact sheet, it says, and when I also called City Hall to get some more information before the meeting tonight, it talks about this being a 10- to 20-year process. So I have children who are six and nine. So what I'm being told is that as my children continue to grow, as they go to intermediate school, and they become teenagers, their neighborhoods are slowly going to be disintegrating as it's purchased off and rezoned and going to a commercial setup. What I was told, I believe I spoke to Ben Young when I called, was that, two things, we could be approached by developers with offers to purchase, if they wanted to purchase our home. I don't want to be bothered. I don't want someone coming and knocking on my door and saying, here, we'll give you this money. I want my neighborhood. And secondly, I said, well, what kind of businesses will come in? Well, we don't know that, but what we know is that these houses can accommodate most commercial businesses. So what that means is several city lots are going to have to come together, and that's where those houses will have to be leveled, and you're going to have to build a new commercial building. So I cannot, and I want you all to think about your own neighborhoods. Would you want houses being cherry-picked over the course of a decade or two, and watching it slowly transform into something that is not a walkable neighborhood? Where my children can't ride, or your grandchildren can't ride their bikes and go visit their friends? I love Tremont Coffee. It's great. But it has impacted the amount of traffic and flow that we have on Fifth Street. So if we add more commercial businesses to that, I can't fathom what that would do to my children's ability to foster relationships and for them to have friends in this neighborhood. Really, it boils down to the fact that we want the peacefulness that is North Canton. And I can understand that we need to be looking at economic growth and things like that, but looking into our neighborhoods is not the place. We want, we want to stay as we are. We want to continue raising our families and building the lives that we have sought to stay and build, and we don't want that to be threatened. Thank you.
Thank you.
And can you spell your last name for me, please?
Me? Oh, Cecil, C-E-C-I-L.
And how do you spell your first name?
S-U-S-A-N-N-E.
Thanks.
Here, I'll go.
And how do you spell your last name?
I-N-I-C-O, Eleanor.
I'm Susan Meadows, M-E-A-D-O-W-S. I live at 232 Sixth Street Northeast, and I have been in that house for 25 years. I intend to die in that house when my sell-by day comes. I'm not moving. I do not want a donut shop next to my house. I do not want a bakery or a car repair shop next to my house. I like the neighbors I have on both sides and across the street, and I want my neighborhood to stay as it is. If you want to put mixed use, you've got Cleveland Avenue, Main Street, Route 8, whatever you want to call it. It's full of mixed use, and it's all very nice, and it's handy for us. You want walking distance. We have walking distance to the pool, to the library, to the new AVA park, whatever that's called. We have it to City Hall. We have wherever we want to walk to. I walk three miles a day, and I have plenty of room to do it, and do it safely. So I don't want my neighborhood torn down. I don't want to see my house that was built in 1920, the woodwork and the wood in that house is nothing compared to what you buy today. You're never going to replace it. I have looked around. There's nothing to replace my house. There's nothing for sale that would replace my house, or my neighborhood, or my friends. I'm not going. And that's my final word on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get your house number again, please?
Two, three, two, six.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Beetle. I'm at 322 Harmon Street Southwest here in North Canton. My husband and I bought our home 32 years ago. We raised my three boys. They went to Hoover's. Even one of my sons even works for North Canton, and I cannot see us move it. I have grandkids in this community. My daughter-in-law is a teacher here in North Canton, and I just cannot see having my house move it. We have the park behind us. That's the reason why we bought our house, was because the park was behind us, that we didn't have any buildings going into the park or even beside us. I have a good neighbors, like, our neighbors lived across the street, Mrs. Baker. Her and her husband was our leader, like, in our neighborhood. Mr. Baker would let us know what was going on in our community when we were first moved in there. I just cannot see the zoning going into our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Megan Travers, T-R-A-V-E-R-S. I'm at 237 Fifth Street. I kind of wanted to ask sort of some questions, but also shed some light. I love the little town in Hudson, that little main area. I love the Cuyahoga Falls area. I love those little, being able to walk to little cafes and different things. I also love my little three streets of neighbors. I have kids that walk to the school, North Canton Middle School and the high school in both directions. If you're in our neighborhood in the spring, you see all the kids playing sports in every direction. High school bands are playing. I mean, that's the small-town feel that I love. I also see a lot of empty buildings on Cleveland Avenue. I see that lot that they just flattened. I see a lot of potential. I love walking to Hollenberg. I love walking to El Raccoon. I love walking to Pabst and the library, and all of the buildings on Cleveland Avenue. I love that. I'm not against that, and I'm not against the little small businesses, but I want to see that utilized before it kind of implodes, because I feel like, on our side of Cleveland Avenue, there are so many kids that feel safe, that are walking to and from sports, to and from schools. And all of us in our little three-street neighborhood, we all look out for one another. We may not know each other very well, but if somebody sees somebody in my yard, somebody down the road is going to tell me. We all look out for one another. If we're building and bringing in new businesses in our neighborhood, we're going to stop losing, we're going to lose that little safe feel. But I'm not against being able to walk a half a mile or a mile to a business, as long as it's not next door. So I just wanted to, you know, think about the kids that are playing in all the sports, and they're expanding the schools too, so that's going to bring in more kids and more people in that area. I think businesses are just going to start to take over. I just, I hope that in the master plan, that there's a boundary, there's a limit, that they're not going to just start consuming the area. So that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alice Jones, 219 Sixth Street Northeast. And I think you have heard from a lot of us here in that little enclave of Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Streets. And not having, but I'm, most of you have probably never been around there or lived there, I don't think you, there was an understanding of how unique and how close in it of a group This, that particular area, whenever a house comes up for sale, it's gone like that, because it's highly desirable, which is why all of us are there, because we are walking distance to the schools, to the pool, to the bike path, to the library, to the bank, to the coffee shop, to the restaurant. We are your walking pedestrians of North Canton. And I think it would be a shame for the city to lose this highly desirable enclave of homes. I've been approached twice in the last two years by individuals who have asked, when you get ready to sell your home, please contact me, because I want your home. I like, they like that idea of living in that lifestyle, which we all love. And the only turnover we've really had is when some of our friends have passed on. We've had Margaret Rizzoliti, Mary Moller, Camille Laff. Yeah. And that's about the only time a house comes up available, because it is so desirable, and people snatch them up quickly. Unfortunately, the people that are snatching these up are young families with children, and that's what drove me. I really hope City Council would reconsider zoning of that area to keep it residential. I think it is a unique drawing aspect for the city. So that's my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Charlene Lang, L-A-N-G-E, and I live at 131 Sixth Street Northeast, and my home will still be standing, but I'm part of the neighborhood. We get together every year, and we close off the street in front of the Rizzolitis, and we have a picnic. This is a family, Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Streets in that area. We're a family. And I just, I don't know, it's, I'm speechless as far as how I feel about that, that, like it has been mentioned, there are so many vacant places on Main Street. Why can't you just keep it there? Why can't you just keep it there? Another thing, when I was looking at page 17, which is the area that you want to put into rezoning, I questioned that there are, and I'm, it's on Orchard Street, but it's to the south of all of those, there are homes, and they're not in any kind of a redistricting or re-deciding, rezoning. Are they already zoned as what you're speaking to zone the rest of our neighborhood? I don't know. I didn't take the time to look at that, but I just questioned that, because they are definitely closer to the new Debold-Nurstorf area. Another thing that I, I haven't read the whole thing, but I read a few things, and there seemed to be something contradictory to me in a statement made about the seniors in our city. There are a lot of seniors, and we're still here because we love it, and we can afford it where we are. I can't afford to go to some of these other places, because that'll just shoot my whole retirement fund. So I'm here, and I've lived in my home for 44 years. This PACE program that is mentioned on page 18, I challenge it because it states something about, it's wanting people to buy solar panels within the city, and I don't know exactly where all you want those solar panels, but if you're talking about the seniors who live in the area, and you're telling me that I can get a low-interest loan in order to put these on my home, I'm on a fixed income. And so all of a sudden, I have this $20,000 approximately to install solar panels on my home. Okay? That's, that's pretty tough for a senior citizen on a fixed income. Also, the last sentence makes a statement that I kind of had to chuckle. It would provide significant property valuation, increase for the cities, and benefit the school district, but also something was said in there that it, that it, I forget what all it said. But anyhow, if all of that happens, Stark County's going to reevaluate the home and say it's worth more, and so all of a sudden, besides the $20,000 loan payment I have, I'm going to have an increase in my real estate taxes. How high can you go before I can't live there anymore on my fixed income? The other question, I looked at another map. It was the pedestrian square, pedestrian square map on page seven, and I thought to myself, why is a factory in the middle of a pedestrian square? But also, something was said in there that it, that it, I forget what all it said. But anyhow, if all of that happens, Stark County's going to reevaluate the home and say it's worth more, and so all of a sudden, besides the $20,000 loan payment I have, I'm going to have an increase in my real estate taxes. How high can you go before I can't live there anymore on my fixed income? The other question, I looked at another map. It was the pedestrian square, pedestrian square map on page seven. And I thought to myself, why is a factory in the middle of a pedestrian square? Lots and lots of traffic at certain times of the day. If you look at all the parking that they've redone, I mean, it's awesome. It looks beautiful, but by the same token, you're talking about traffic in a pedestrian square. It's built around a warehouse, a factory, as opposed to built around a neighborhood of where people live. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jason Schukert, 241 Fifth Street Northeast. I like our little neighborhood. It's a little honey hole over there. Couple of questions. What percentage of our properties are residential versus commercial already in the city? And then, second question, how many, I'm nervous.
Take your time.
What, what percent, or what do we have of commercial properties currently that are vacant? That's all I got, just kind of curious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, S C H U C K E R T.
Anyone else wanting to address council tonight?
I don't know if I can speak, I don't live in North Canton.
What's historic?
My name is Cindy Ranty, and I live at 6261 Hollydale Avenue, Plank Township. And I just want to state, I was so glad to hear all you neighbors from Fifth Street, Sixth Street, and Seventh Street be here at this meeting. I grew up at 237 Fifth Street Northeast, and it was a wonderful neighborhood. My grandmother built the house at 232 Sixth Street Northeast. And she lived there till, I don't know, 90 or something. And I want to tell you, she's right, that house, you cannot replace that house. It has the original woodwork, that must be eight inches on the floor, so stained as it originally was. And I just loved that house. And I'm just so appreciative and glad to hear you've come together, especially for Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Street. Because I hate to see commercial property going in there. And I just came, I couldn't stay for the whole meeting, but North Canton School is having a public session on your new intermediate school they want to do and put in front of the high school. But I couldn't stay for that whole meeting, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Name, what was your last name again?
R A N T E.
Hi, Alice Jones again, 219 Sixth Street Northeast.
We can only speak one time.
You can only do it once? Can I throw a question out?
We'll be here after as well.
I'll, I'll have you ask the question. You go, girl.
My name's Derek Ray, I live at 331 Harmon Street Southwest. Question, does a house with a historic designation affect the zoning?
Something we'll get, there is a house designated historic in our neighborhood.
Okay. So, I just want to preface my concern with, the city of North Canton's always been great to my family, my business, my wife teaches here, the kids have gone to school here, it's been great. The city afforded me an abatement 15 years ago that's seen me save thousands and thousands of dollars over the years. My concern is, I live on the north side of, of Harmon Street. The proposal was to tear down the houses on the south side, like where Mrs. Beetle lives. That's going to kill the value of my house. I don't care what anybody says about that, it's, it is. I mean, once, if this passes and people get to know about it, and I want to sell because I want to sell in the next couple of years and build something a little bigger, it's just going to kill the vice. All that tax saving I've seen over the last 15 years is out the door. So, just wanted to pass that along. That's all I got.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Hi, Jen Brackman, 222 Fifth Street. I've loved living here, I've lived here and rented for ten, almost 12 years from the Micklys, and then ended up buying the home. I didn't even look anywhere else because I love my home so much. I moved here after moving away for a short period of time. My kids have all gone to school here, they get to walk to school. I only hesitate when they walk to school, when they walk past the Diebold factory just because there's been some squirrely folks that have come in and worked there over the past few years. It's really kind of stunned to have them in my backyard, literally, doing construction from Diebold. I would hate to see more commercial properties. I know my neighbors that live a little even further down. Sure, there's a fence up, sure, there's still some trees left, but my, my privacy is gone. It's something that I have valued very much on our street. And the last house on that one side, and it's kind of nice because I had my own little corner of the world, and that's gone already with Diebold, and they're not even fully constructed yet. And I can see my neighbors shaking their hands because it's just so frustrating that you wake up to noise constantly. I loved living here, and dirt, oh, I can't even talk about how many times I pressure washed the one side of my house. But it's just frustrating when, you know, our opinion is wanted. When, you know, we chose to live here, we're choosing to stay here, we're choosing to, when we have a lot of options. Most of us in this room do have options to go anywhere. Whether we want to say that or not, we all have a choice every day. I want to stay here, but I don't want to stay here, you know, in a few years, my house could either be purchased eventually, while the FAQs may say that, no, that's not the intent. In the future, it could be, that changes over time. It's a plan, it's a, it's a, think of vision on the paper. I don't want to see my property value decrease. It's already a great place to live, and I don't want to see that go away just from, and as much as I love home makers and things like that, I know everyone in my neighbors, if something's a little amiss at my house, someone will call. And I know each one of us here always kind of has each other's backs whether we say it or not. You start adding tons of traffic through there, whether, I mean, that just changes the dynamic. You lose that sense of privacy that a lot of us really value in living here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to address council tonight?
Yeah. Hi, my name's David Saylor. I live at 211 Cole Avenue, North Canton here. I've lived in my home for 63 years. My parents owned that house, and after they passed, I bought it. And before that, my grandmother owned that house. And before that, my grandfather bought that house and moved it where St. Paul's School is right now. In 1920, they dragged it back to its current location. It was built in 1908, okay? I don't plan on moving, okay? I'm going to die there, probably, maybe today, maybe 10 years from now. But I plan on dying there, okay? And so, I ask that you keep my neighborhood the way it is. I've had a lot of changes over my 63 years. If I look at my baby pictures of the neighborhood, a lot of those houses are gone. Most of those people died in their own homes, okay? They, they, they were 90 or 80, 90 years old before they left. And it wasn't by their choice, they were carried out of their house. And that's pretty much what I'm going to do, I'm going to be carried out of my house. So again, I've been there 63 years, and hopefully, God willing, I can be there another 20 or 30, okay? But I'd like to keep that neighborhood, remnants of my neighborhood, pretty much intact. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanting to address council? Last call. All right. So let's, let's talk about it now. Do you guys agree? Okay, so let's, let's wave the council rolls and proceed with that.
And if they want to go.
Yeah, yeah. But let's, let's entertain the discussion on the master plan and the conversation that we had right now.
Do you want to amend the order, the agenda, and just jump to that one?
Well, first, we'll just discuss questions, and we'll go back to it. So, we'll just discuss what was discussed in, in the public right now.
We made a motion to amend our rules and permit a discussion by council of the comments made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Questions carries? Who wants to start?
Well, with the master plan, how many of you attended any of those master plan meetings back in the summer?
We didn't know about it.
We didn't know about it.
We didn't know anything about it. It was, it was a group that put it together, I mean...
There were...
There were 10 or 12.
How many looked at the website? How many looked at the city?
How many of you have looked at our website?
Well, it took a long time to...
I've never heard of it.
Website changed over the last week.
Point of order, okay, let's, point of order, we won't.
Why can you talk about how the master?
Wait, point of order. Let's have the council go. I don't think that we should have back and forth.
No, no, no. If, okay.
Just to, just to keep the order.
I agree with that. So if we're going to survey, let's do a show of hands to ask, so it doesn't get all out of control.
But I think what was certainly to be conveyed, if I may, by John and by Stephanie, so this was not put together by the city of North Canton. This was, there was a series of meetings in the summer of '21, correct? So, the summer of '21, there was a series of meetings, I think they were all over at Walsh College, is that correct? And this was done through the Cleveland Urban Design Collaborative, and it's, it's with Kent State University, correct? This is not a guaranteed, hey, we're going here. This is a, an idea of, or this is possible ideas that could come down the road. I think, is that a fair assessment? Daryl is the chair of the Community and Economic Development Committee?
It's a series of issues that came up in the conversation.
So, while you're thinking, we're not going and bulldozing households, correct?
Yes.
No, that's correct.
Okay, we'll come back to that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll let you...
But, but I think, here's the point, is there was a public process that arrived at this point. Didn't fall from the heavens. Let me just take a step back. I'm probably, I am, the longest-serving member on this council. When I went on board 40 years ago, our citizens could get information about the city from four sources. It was like a fire hose. The Can Repository, the Akron Beacon Journal, the North Canton Sun, WHBC. Covered our meetings every Monday night. The world has now changed, and that's a topic I'll come back to later. Now, it's incumbent upon citizens to go to our website every Monday night or Tuesday morning or whatever, and look and see what's happening. So we are here based upon that process that started, and it's actually gone through a second edit.
Yeah.
To Riverbowl's point, though, there was a comment during public speaks about, "We only found out about this two weeks ago." It was just introduced two weeks ago. So finding out about it two weeks ago means you found out about it immediately when it was introduced. This is actually only the second meeting that it's come back to council. You guys are all right up with it.
Yeah, you're really, you're timely. And just one thing I want to say too is, a lot of cities have master plans. I've been on council for 11 or 12 years, and there were many times, and Mark Scareta especially would say, "Well, the master plan says this." It didn't happen, or it does happen, or you take parts and pieces. When we attended these meetings, I mean, to be honest, I think there were 20, 25 people at the most. And I feel like half of those people were us. And so it's very normal, as you have any city, any entity, any township, not that many people show. I, I don't know if you would have shown, if we said we're doing a city master plan, you don't know if it's going to affect your neighborhood or not. These were ideas, and a lot of that premise, as I recall, was based on the Hoover Company. So if I recall correctly, a lot was about job creation. What can we do to entice businesses to come into our neighborhood in this particular corridor? So you are the closest to that corridor, and that is most likely why that became a possibility. So then these urban, urban architects, urban specialists, urban designers, they come up with a plan. And that's what they've really said to us. And then we, as council people, can go forth, go forward with it, or on pieces, on parts. It just gives us options on different things that we would never have thought of. I know someone mentioned the PACE program. We would never think about that, and that was probably an idea from some small city in Michigan. The way they do different banners, the way they do streetscaping. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel, we're just taking ideas from a lot of different entities and seeing what might fly. And you all have honestly done an amazing job. I don't live in your neighborhood, I wish I did. I want to come to your party in the summer. I grew up on a street like that, and mine is nothing, nothing like that. And so you, you did an excellent job making your case, and the only other time we've had close to as many people is when we mentioned something about deer and feral cats. So thank you.
Well, you know, I've lived here in North Canton for over 35 years. I live on Harmon, down by the park. My wife is going to retire from the education system here, so we, we have a close-knit neighborhood. Many, many, many neighborhoods in North Canton are just like yours. And I would hate it to happen to my street. You know, it is up on the, you know, on the east end, but again, thank you for coming and, you know, sharing all your thoughts with us. But this was done by an outside firm who doesn't know the people.
Just ideas.
Just ideas. Yep, that's all, just ideas.
How do we stop it?
Sorry. Like you coming tonight and telling us.
I apologize, I'm going to stand. I, I don't mean to be speaking down to people, it's just that I can see everyone, and I think it's rude to kind of crouch down. First of all, is I want to echo everybody else, I'm glad you're here. I per, you know, if you attended these meetings, you'd know many times I talk about our charter. And our charter is the political authority that you grant us to make decisions on your behalf. We enact a series of laws and ordinances that are to protect and promote your interests. Zoning is one of those, and I'll come back to that in a second. But I want to take a look, I, I don't want to dodge some of the good questions or comments that were made tonight, but I think it's important because you're here, I want you, my, my mission for you is to think about this. Because this is really important, really important. I've served this community for over 40 years. My wife taught in the school, I raised two kids here, they went to Hoover. Didn't, unfortunately, didn't stay here. But somebody asked, what's our vision? What's our vision? It's here. We want a livable, walkable, safe community. We want it well-run. We want a good school system, even though we don't operate the school. We think that's integral to the success of this community. To make all that happen, and make the things that you enjoy and desire work, we have to have revenue. That's A. I have to pay the police. I have to pay the fire department. Somebody's got to pay the teachers. You got to plow the streets, got to pave them. How do we do that? Why don't we tax people? We tax primarily the people who are working at Diebold. That's an avalanche of dollars. When I went on council in 1981, we had the Hoover Company, 3,500 people working there. I'm telling you, it was a flood of cash. We had more money than we knew what to do with. It was wonderful. How, how so? Because in the late '80s, we began to replace most of the infrastructure in this town. Water, sewer, storms, sanitary, put in curb and gutter where it didn't exist. That helped the value of the properties on those streets. It took money. Did it cost the residents, it cost the residents a dime because we had people working here. In those forty years, a lot of great things have happened in this community and continue to happen. But I also know this. The easiest thing for everybody to do up here is to come in on Monday night, pat ourselves on the back and say how wonderful everything is. That's what they do. Some of us also are looking down the road. And we're asking ourselves, what happens to older communities where the housing stock is eighty or a hundred or a hundred and twenty years old? There's really nothing special about the housing stock. It's just eighty, a hundred, or a hundred and twenty years old. What happens when the housing stock begins to shift from owner-occupied to rental? What happens? What happens to that community? I can tell you what happens, and I can tell you where to go. Literally and figuratively. You don't wanna live there. So, so your kids can walk to school, I gotta do stuff. And I gotta be thinking about what hap, what do we do with this housing stock? What do we do? Now, I will tell you, and I speak for no one else, my philosophy on zoning is really pretty simple. Unless you've got the consent of the people who are first in, it stands. Our charter says, that zoning, if I decide, or this council, or some other future council decides to walk away from it, it's referendable by our charter, goes right to the ballot. Difficult process, but it goes to the ballot for the community to decide. So there's an ultimate check in our charter to protect all of you if the council would behave irresponsibly or just simply against your will. But I wanna come back to this, where do we want this community to be down the road? What should it look like? Part of the challenge that all councils have is they work Monday to Monday. It's natural. What we're trying to do with a master plan, through a process however flawed, is say, okay, what does that future look like out here? What's that vision? Part of the challenge here in North Canton and in this school district is, it's built out. You ask about Main Street. Part of the challenge we have in Main Street is the lots aren't big enough for a lot of businesses. I can't get parking, I can't get a building. We've got actually pretty good occupancy in most places. It's a desirable place, but I can't get new capital investment. And that's what pays the bills. Some of you have been following Meyer, for example. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year estimated for the school alone. That's money that you don't have to pay. You wanna stay in your home, you want low taxes? What's my choice? I can bring in new capital investment and work to it, try to make sure it's compatible with neighborhoods and the residents, and that's why we have zoning to get to that end. Now, there are no plans to rezone your property, it was an idea. I don't know what you were told. But the reality is, it was an idea. And there's a whole lot of work that has to go into fact, to end of that rezone before it would occur.
Yeah.
Weeks and weeks and weeks, all public. Council's gotta vote, Senate of the Planning Commission, they hold a public hearing, they vote, comes back to council, three sec, public hearing, three separate votes.
They come, they visit.
The guy who's sitting over there with a bald head, he's got the veto pen. All right? Now, Dave, that's not you.
He's got three over there. What are you talking about?
Wade, yeah. They're all good, they're all good-looking. I'm not putting you in there. It's like Mayor Wilder has the veto pen. When I was mayor, you used to hold up on council, do something stupid, they'd look at me and say, what's happening? I'd say, that's the veto pen. It works. This is a concept. That's what it is. We're trying to think of what happens when neighborhoods go bad. Yours may be fine. Twenty years down the road, you know, when you die and your kids sell it, who are they gonna sell it to? A real estate investor who's gonna turn it into a rental? What's gonna happen? Yeah, that's exactly right. What's gonna happen? We're trying to think about this, what happens? What have we done? This isn't the only thing. We've got a brand-new rental registration program that's unrolling because we're trying to get on handle on how many rentals do we have in town? What's the condition of those rentals? Why? Because that affects your property value. We have code enforcement. We got a guy driving around looking for people who are breaking our laws right now. Hasn't happened in over a decade. This council, that administration, supports code enforcement. We're gonna make some people very unhappy. No, you cannot park your boat in the front lawn. I'm sorry. And by the way, that stack of tires next to your garage, it's gone. Why? Because the health of your neighborhood depends upon your neighbor. We're doing it. So as I look at this thing, you ask about a vision. I'm the old guy here. This town has changed much since I came in 1964. There was a time when we didn't have to worry about revenue. We didn't have to worry about development. We didn't have to worry about the age of the housing stock. I didn't have to worry about rentals. Today, I do. And it's not only the physical condition of the house. What happens to the neighborhood when it's all rentals? I can direct you some streets and outline communities where you can go experience that life firsthand. You won't want it. So, I'm one guy. Six others. We're trying to figure out where this place is gonna go. We need you engaged. I need you to come with facts. Do your homework. There isn't a person here that won't take a phone call. I can take, do you know how many phone calls I get? Everybody's asleep. But I can tell you this, I can drive down Harmon, and I can point to a couple houses that frankly ought to have bulldozers put through them. And I don't wanna embarrass anybody, but you know what I'm talking about.
Yes, I do.
Yep. And so the question is, what the heck do we do about it? I don't know, but here's an idea. Somebody said, okay, stay in your home, fine. If you wanna sell it, great. If it gets rezoned, it's gonna get rezoned with your permission. We can't take it. That's the other thing you need to understand. We cannot by law take your home for economic development purposes. I can't do it. And the bar to knock it down because it's a nuisance is that high. It will take me, Wayne, nod your head, it will take me an army of lawyers, months.
Three years.
I've said months is not nearly enough.
Years. I got one down in my ward, right around the corner from me. Festering like a rancid boil.
Thank you.
Is that accurate description, Mr. Boardman? But, but you know, here's the thing, is, tell me what you're for. And tell me how we get there. The status quo doesn't work. I gotta have facts, I gotta, we gotta know where the world is. Where do you wanna be? That's what the plan is, this was a stab at it. And that's what it is. I can tell you, you will know. We've done it, the others don't. But we voted against other things in master plans. We didn't do them.
Yeah.
We took stuff out, crossed it out, it's stupid, it's dumb, you know, we're not gonna do it. But let's think big. What is it? But everybody should leave here tonight with the knowledge that tomorrow morning, nobody's gonna be at your door from the city forcing you to sell your property because we're gonna rezone it. Because it won't happen. It's not how it works. But we need to know where you want to be. We can drive all the jobs out of town. And then we're gonna come to you for taxes.
Daryl? Can I just ask one question?
No. Unfortunately, I apologize, but I'll be available after the meeting. So, again, we appreciate it. We welcome the comments. Welcome the conversation, as I told John before the meeting. This is where the conversation begins. Not ends. It begins. We are your agents. Where do you wanna go? Now, I'm gonna say one more thing while I'm up here. Because I got the floor, right?
You do.
Yep.
All right. Now, you heard from one of our speakers that we're gonna rezone this community into extinction. Neighborhoods into extinction, absolute garbage. Not true. He said, well, you know, you guys were so sloppy, you didn't get Debold. You failed the Lord. We got half of Debold, the half that we could get. The other half went into an existing office building in Hudson. We weren't even in the game. Wasn't a question of competence. It was a question, we didn't have anything at the time. Kmart, too contaminated. I got a fifty-dollar bill in my wallet right now. It says something's gonna happen up there. If anybody wants to take me up on that bet, I'll be happy to place it right now. Because somebody doesn't know what he's talking about. We can't make decisions in this community based upon misinformation. We've gotta have the facts, and we've gotta work the facts. That, that Meyer project, when it, when it comes online, I'm not discouraging anybody from that fifty-dollar bet. That Meyer project is gonna pour a huge amount of money into the city coffers through income tax.
In schools?
Schools get their three fifty, estimated. We're gonna have three hundred-plus employees up there. You can work the math.
So when is this gonna happen?
Soon. Understand that this is a thirty-million-dollar investment. No corporation is gonna make that kind of investment until it's absolutely sure. Unless it's sure that everything's gonna go okay. The administration's done a superb job. But that's money that you don't have to pay. So, your mission out there is to tell us what you want. Can we find a balance? What's it look like, what's it look like down the road? But again, tonight, nobody's taking their home. There's no rezoning. There's a long public process. Ultimately, at the end of the day, you control it in two ways. You elect your members of council, the mayor, you've got it, you've got the right. You have the right to referendum. And if you don't think that doesn't work, Jackson did it twice on a project in the last decade. So, quite possible. I'm done.
Awesome, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Daryl.
I'd like to just mention that I think it was honestly the vision of the mayor to update our master plan, that he took it upon himself to say, we need to take this outdated version that we have and bring it up to date and look at other options. As a body here and as the administration, we'll reach out to consultants many times to get input. We're not authorities in every area, and you have to reach out to those consultants. We reached out to a consultant to help build that. But to Daryl's point, this is a collaboration and communication amongst residents on what your desires are, help to bring to fruition what this plan's gonna look like in the end. Thank you.
Do you want to give some more specific answers to questions that were in?
Yes, if you wanna read them, you can.
Attempted my best.
All right. Read the question.
But is it...
Let's go, Ray. I can't see that part right now.
Mayor and Mayor have...
Are you winking at me?
Yes.
Well, folks, again, thank you very much for attending tonight. It means a lot to me, and I think it means a lot to the council. And yes, this was something that, one of the things I wanted to bring to our city because, no offense against the previous administrations, but I, I didn't see any movement. Our city was stagnant. And we had to look at some things because I think our, our likely path forward requires, you know, economic opportunity and an open field for anybody who's interested in maintaining a business here but bringing businesses in. Again, what was presented here are ideas of how we can maybe adopt some of those to the betterment of our community. And believe me, I've patrolled your streets, okay, for about thirty-six years. And I probably wrote you a few overnight parking tickets along the way. Some of you may have my autograph. But you know, that's, that was my whole goal, was always to maintain a safe community for us. And I couldn't have picked a better place to ever work or live than to be right here in North Canton with all that we have to offer. But also, what more we can offer, you know, for our citizens. And to protect the things that you have and that you've come to love and be so dear about. I understand, you know, the fighting for, for the past as much as I'm trying to, as I'm fighting for the future. And, and that means, you know, social and economic stability and mobility will be in place for now and in the future. I wrote those notes down a little bit tonight while I was listening. How do we keep those things going forth? But we need to look forward and not backward. And I wanna bring families together to keep them together. And we may not be moving forward quickly, but we're not gonna move back. Maybe that's a little bit of what Mr. Revolt said in his ten minutes. Mine's gonna be a little shorter than Daryl. But believe me, it's nothing that, that, for myself, always trying to think, what's the better good for our community? And I think the other thing, too, is, is change. Over the last few years, this administration or myself, we've probably brought about change to our community. And some people don't like that. And I understand. But my goal has always been to, to move our city forward, to prepare us for the next twenty-five years. Because, you know, I'm not gonna be here, I know that. But where are your kids going to be? What are we gonna leave for them? How do we sustain our community now for in the future? To maintain our police and our fire and our EMS response, our good roads, our good water. So these are things that I've always been trying to think about, and how do we preserve those? But also to make sure that, you know, our homes are safeguarded. But also, we wanna make it a livable community. We can live, work, and play, and retire. And again, if we can control the dirt, we can control the project. I can't, I don't have that luxury across the street. And, and, but I, I feel that over the three years, we're as close as we've ever been in giving the IRG a plan that they have to meet on our terms. I don't think that was ever presented before. We've always been on their terms. Well, you know what? You're on our terms now. And we'll see what happens. Come June first.
Can we applaud to that?
Thank you. So anyways, believe me, I heard every word you said tonight, whether I remember it, I don't know. But know that, again, I'm just trying to look forward. And we'll look and see how these things adapt for our communities. And yes, you've heard from Daryl tonight, our intentions aren't to, to, you know, disrupt your home. Daryl?
Yeah. Then, I wanna come back to one, one more point. You know, we talk, we talk about the need for development, we talk about the need for money. That big fire truck that runs up and down the street, the big one, that's over a million dollars to replace. You can't buy used. It's a, it's over a million dollars new to buy that unit. The police officers, we've got sixty, seventy-five thousand dollars a year in each of those officers. We've got four of them on the street per shift plus a search. We're talking serious cash here. Street. You got it, slide? Here, this is, we're, we're gonna be discussing on street paving here a little bit. But this gives you an idea of what we're, what, well, everybody likes their... But this gives you an idea of what we're, what we're, everybody likes their street paved? Look at this, in 2018, we did five miles. It cost us $113,000 amount. Look at what we're paying, we did in 2022. 1.7 miles at 2008. I've got to have development. We've got to have development, in this case, property tax, to drive. Or we don't pave the street, we have, what do we got? 79.5 miles. Those are all the residential streets in town. We can't get grants to do those. Main Street, yeah, we can't. But this gives you a sense of the urgency that we feel about doing things. Nobody ever calls me up and says, "Don't pave my street." You know? "Don't fix it." "Oh yeah, the electric cable underneath it makes the snow go away." It's burned out. But the point is that we're trying to figure out what this community, the best parts of this community, to the mayor's point, how do we preserve them for the future? Every year, our costs go up on personnel 3%. This is the way it is, under Ohio's collective bargaining laws. They're there. We don't want the police to strike. And I don't want to pay the guy that's reviving you less than the guy at Walmart. You know? I don't think that would make you feel very good. We want to make sure we have paid professional staff. And I'm telling you right now, it's harder today to good people. The guy who's carrying a gun in that cruiser, do you realize the liability we have? If he offs somebody in a traffic stop? We've got to pay good people to work here. The guy who's out on Christmas Eve at 2:00 in the morning, when it's 5 degrees, repairing a water line that services the west half of town. Do I want to pay him $10 an hour? I've got to have revenue. So that's, I mean, and that's what makes all the life that you talked about worth living here. That's our vision. We're trying to figure out how to get there. Okay.
Can I just?
Go on.
I just want to echo whatever, what my colleagues have said. The mayor has said, "Thank you very much for coming this evening." It's great to have citizens involved. It's great to see people I haven't seen in years. Says, "Nice to see you guys." We heard you. And I think as the mayor said, we've heard every word you said. And I don't know that I can recite every single word, but we get the sentiment. I live in an older community or an older neighborhood as well. I wouldn't want to see my neighborhood go away as, any much as you guys were saying as well. So, like Darrell said, leaving here tonight, I hope you were reassured. More importantly, our business cards are out there. And just as he said, give us a call, send us an email, come here on Monday night and ask your questions when we're done. So again, thank you all very much for coming and especially thank those who spoke tonight.
Yeah, just some housekeeping stuff. I don't want to thank everybody for coming and speaking. I have ties to your neighborhood, too. I grew up playing with some kids in that neighborhood a long time ago. Love your neighborhood. There's no plans to rezone. It's, as you've heard. But I am very impressed by your unity and the way you guys came together and spoke. So, we appreciate that. You can always talk to us before and after meetings. As Jamie said, our business cards are out there. I'm going to say that let's take a break right now.
Just for a five minute?
Like a five-minute break. So if you want to stay, you're more than welcome to stay. But this will give you the opportunity to. Yeah, okay.
We shouldn't recess for five minutes.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Good.
I'm not sure how they put it because they sort of went through the truck. As far as being able to generate horsepower. So I'm not sure exactly how it was placed. Yeah, they moved that far. Put it back. The plant was the first house in the city. But like a day, you know, I kept it feeling that probably about 19. Probably about 25, maybe 25.
Fair, sport, blue.
Yeah, I know, that's fair. But that's a, that's a quarter.
My grandbabies. The two boys, the two great-grandbabies, yes. Three and five.
Still there. Still handful.
I got to babysit for them for two days. And it was like, me? You're not used to it, you know? It was challenging. I'm glad I did it.
Yeah.
For Darrell, so you got some referendum something? A lot of work.
But I think the answer is.
All right, ready?
Let's go.
Hi, Brad.
Hey, Brad? Brad. You're really striking this.
The one in phase, phase eight, have you seen that? Oh, that's real lovely. It's nice. Doesn't look like any other house in the neighborhood.
Hi. How's it going, Darrell? Vacation. Disney World. Man, I was terribly sick.
Aren't you? You're excited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've been good for
Okay.
Several days.
All right, so let's continue. We're going to move on to full business. Ben, would you please read ordinance 67-2022?
An ordinance amending Chapter 1125 definitions, specifically Division 1125.02, A25, driveway, private residence, and Chapter 1133.08, single-family and two-family residential district regulations, specifically subsection 1133.08c, additional regulations for garages, parking areas, driveways, and vehicles of the codified ordinances of the City of North Canton to allow permeable pavers as a permitted driveway and accessory parking paving surface in residential districts.
Okay, economic development, Darrell?
I feel a compelling need to share time tonight.
Mr. Matheny?
Thank you, Mr. Revolt.
Thank you, sir.
So this originated from one of our neighbors in Ward 2. They were adding a garage to their property. And in doing so, zoning required them to pave their driveway. They wanted to keep the character of the home. They had a very well-maintained gravel driveway. They presented an option of these grid permeable pavers, but it was denied because in our ordinances, they were stuck with asphalt or concrete. So with the help of the administration and Mr. D'Orio, we went through the process of changing the zoning to agree to that and changing our ordinance now with the third reading so that they can use those permeable pavers. Not changing the apron from concrete, but helping keep the gravel out of the roads, keeping it out of our sewers, but maintaining the look of their home. So that was an area where citizens and neighborhood had come together and we were able to make a change that's going to help everybody in North Canton.
Good solution.
Just if I might, Dave, you happen to remember, this is for the folks in tents, this is a change toward zoning ordinance, like a rezone would be. This request originated in what month last year? Do you remember? Was it October, Patrick? Was it October? I want to say it was summer, maybe? Yeah, so this has been a six-month process. So it demonstrates that zoning issues generally, whether we're rezoning properties or making amendments toward zoning ordinance, require huge amounts of time. And this is, we've read this twice, and this will be the third and final reading.
We had a public hearing.
We had a public hearing.
Zoning had a public hearing that took place before the vote. So it's a long process. But this is one where residents came together and neighbor came together.
Yep.
This is a good change for the city. And that's what we want.
I'm going to motion that we adopt the third reading of ordinance 67-22.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Question carries? Okay, moving on. Ben, would you please read ordinance 68-2022?
An ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 1151, signs of the codified ordinances of the City of North Canton.
All right, we have a new sign ordinance. And as the short title suggests, we're going to repeal and replace 1151. This is the third and final reading. And again, this is moved through a similar process. Lengthy process. Counsel, are there any questions or comments before I make a motion?
Nope.
I move we adopt the third reading of ordinance 68-22.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries? Okay, moving on. Ben, would you please read ordinance 69-2022?
An ordinance amending Chapter 1136, Main Street District's Regulations of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton to repeal Section 1136.17 signage in its entirety.
I said, "We've replaced," and this is the repeal. Any questions or comments from counsel? Seeing none then, I move we adopt the third reading of ordinance 69-22.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries? Ben, would you please read ordinance 3-2023?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of North Canton to release McKinley Apple Grove Limited from performance bond obligations established by a commercial bond as authorized by ordinance 38-2026.
Okay, this is the third reading to release the bond. There's nothing new on this. They've met their obligations. I move we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries? Ben, would you please read ordinance 4-2023?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of North Canton to enter into an agreement with McKinley Apple Grove Limited, thereby accepting its maintenance bond to guarantee certain maintenance improvements in the sanctuary phase five development.
This is the third reading of this. There's nothing new. This is entering into the agreement. I believe it's a cash bond. I move that we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries? Okay, moving on to new business. Ben, would you please read ordinance 11-2023?
An ordinance to recodify the provisions of Chapter 1172, Schedule of Fees, Subsections 1172.01A through H of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton, which establish fees for building permits, planner views, and other related services from their current placement in the City of North Canton zoning code to a more appropriate placement in the City of North Canton building code.
Darrell?
As we discussed at our last committee meeting, this is just, I want to say, a sort of technical edit, if you will. We haven't raised the fees. We've moved some structure around, given it a new home.
Move to adopt?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries? Ben, would you please read Resolution 12-2023?
A resolution endorsing and adopting the final draft of the 2023 master plan for the City of North Canton, Ohio.
Okay, Darrell?
Darren, about 10 or 15 minutes?
No.
I think we've discussed this. Mr. Stry, do you have a comment?
Yes, so I'm going to make a motion to remove items 2 and 3 from page 17.
Second.
Any other discussion or comments on the rest of the master plan?
Thank you.
No, I just think we have to start to remember that they're just suggestions. So if it says we're doing something regarding solar energy, they're just suggestions and we will evaluate as needed.
Okay.
A lot of good ideas.
So I made the motion to remove items 2 and 3. Jamie, second?
Yeah, I second. I think Darrell.
Okay.
I have one comment. And again, I don't want to be redundant. I have no objection to.
Yeah, page 17.
I don't have an objection to removing.
Begin, Darrell.
I have no objection to removing, to making an amendment. But I would be remiss, and I want to reiterate my comment to the crowd. This community, the citizens of this community, must pay attention to the condition of its housing stock and be prepared to consider options. Leaving declining housing in place may ultimately destroy the neighborhood that you love. This is serious stuff. So as this goes out, it doesn't mean that that concern is no longer valid. I'm gonna argue it probably is more valid because nobody will think about it. Money to money. So, you wanna call a vote?
Yep.
Yes.
All in favor of the amendment?
Let's reintroduce just to make it smooth. So I'm gonna move that we remove items two and three from page seventeen.
And also of the master plan? Of the master plan.
Yes.
Then I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Now do we need to do another motion?
Now we'll vote as is. So now I've lost my page and I can't read because I can't see. So let me phone board here. Okay. Kind of a motion and a second to adopt the first reading of resolution twelve dash twenty-three. As a matter of...
Revolt moves? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ben, would you please read resolution thirteen dash twenty-two?
A resolution for the submission of the question of an additional tax levy for the purpose of providing for the general construction, reconstruction, refurcising, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges, ORC sections five-seven-oh-five point one-nine G in the city of North Canton, Stark County, Ohio.
If I had Stephanie.
Okay, we've talked about this a number of times and those of you in the audience who are able to see actually some of the monies that we have spent on our roads and even yesterday you might have seen how quickly we were out there salting and doing them. So, and this is about road repaving as well. So we are asking for additional monies for that and Patrick, what else would you like to add?
Yes, I'd ask that in council and considering this, that the deadline to submit to the board of elections is I believe like February sixth, first. So I would ask that council amend its rules, dispense with requiring three readings as provided by charter on the subject and so that we can get this to the ballot.
Okay. And you both, the administration and finance, have done a lot of work in looking at this and looking at our costs over the years and where we're at and what we need to move forward. So, any other questions or concerns?
No.
Okay.
So I move that we amend ordinance, or excuse me, resolution thirteen dash twenty-three to suspend the rules and adopt under emergency.
We'll read through the whole thing.
First reading.
Yeah.
Not the first reading.
Adopt the first reading, okay.
Same as...
Motion and a second to adopt the first reading of resolution thirteen dash twenty-two.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion and a second to suspend the rules of council required, rules requiring three readings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And kind of a motion and a second to adopt resolution thirteen dash twenty-two under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ben, would you please read ordinance fourteen dash twenty-two?
A resolution for the submission of the question of an additional tax levy for the purpose of providing for flood defense, providing and maintaining a flood wall or pumps and other stormwater improvement purposes to prevent floods in said city under Ohio Revised Code Sections five-seven-oh-five point one-nine O in the city of North Canton, Stark County, Ohio.
Okay, same as above and I really can't say it any better than it is stated. So I ask to move this forward under suspension of rules.
Yeah, let me read through them. Kind of a motion and a second to adopt the first reading of resolution fourteen twenty-two.
Revolt moves? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Kind of a motion and a second to suspend the rules requiring three readings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Kind of a motion and a second to adopt resolution fourteen dash twenty-two under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Revolt seconds?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ben, would you please read resolution fifteen dash twenty-two?
A resolution appointing Terrence Seeburger as North Canton's representative to the Stark County Board of Health for a five-year term beginning March first, twenty-twenty-three and ending February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-eight.
Mr. Seeburger is the mayor's selection for this. He's been on this board since two thousand and eight. He has never missed a meeting. He is very adamant and very favorable for the city of North Canton in his work there. We wanna keep him working where he wants to be able to help, so. Any other thoughts, questions there? Would you like to add anything?
Nope, that's fine. I'm...
He's a good runner as well and I think that's important. You're on the health board.
He takes that position very seriously and my conversations with the director of the department, he hasn't ever missed a meeting since his term began in two thousand and eight. And he seeks to return to that and I have all the confidence in for him to do that for us and represent our city on the Stark County Board of Health.
Make a motion that we adopt the first reading of resolution fifteen twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Department reports. Patrick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So just to bring counsel up to speed on a couple items. So when we look at the EMS runs, fire EMS runs for twenty-twenty-two, we're averaging around three hundred and twenty-five a month. That's more than double from, you know, just seven years ago. So it's an unsustainable pace. The rate is growing. And so it's something that we talk about all the time. You've probably been read in the newspaper, some of the area fire EMS departments that are, you know, running short of staff. It's hard to find people. We're all competing for a limited number of individuals. Now, as you know, we engaged a consultant that specializes in fire and EMS operations to come in and look at our department and look at it from top to bottom and try to find ways to help us understand what policy changes might need to be taken by the mayor and the city council. And we're addressing some of those concerns. I will say that there's, you know, a strong pattern that exists in the private sector that's taking advantage of our public service and causes an undue cost to the rest of the residents and constituency in North Canton. So that study will be completed by the end of June. So they are collecting data. They'll be in town soon to meet with fire personnel, administrative personnel, to talk about all these various things. In addition, I wanna, you know, commend our local collective bargaining unit that represents fire and EMS for reaching out to us. We had a meeting last week. They too are concerned about getting qualified applicants in. And we have, through the budget, looked to hire two additional firefighter EMTs. And so we got into a discussion and really are looking that the business model that we have, we know needs to be more flexible and more adaptive to current conditions. So approximately fifteen, twenty years ago-ish, you know, a previous administration, a previous council put us on a path at that time that the only people that we wanted to hire were firefighters slash EMTs, a hybrid department. You had to have both certifications to be hired. Well, that's what everybody else wanted to do too in the last fifteen or twenty years. And what we're finding is that there aren't enough people going out and getting both certifications. So if you don't have both certifications, you're precluded from being hired. So what we met with in the collective bargaining unit is trying to put together a memorandum of understanding that would allow for a couple things to happen. One, that would allow for lateral transfers from other departments to come here. And second, that would allow us to hire an individual with one certification, but while they're here working for us, afford the fire department the opportunity to put them through certification to get the other designation while they're here. So these are some things that we're working on. I didn't wanna just throw it at you when it was completed. This is in the talking phases, so just wanted to make sure you're aware. Changing gears to a different subject, Dogwood Pool. So met with our management team today, which is done through the YMCA of Central Stark County. Have done a great job in the five-year contract that we have them under. And they have every indication that they want to renew. But in sitting down and looking at the rate structure, we are going to be making a recommendation that the rates be increased for next year. I'm working with them to come up with what that might look like. Right now, we think it's probably about a five percent increase across the board, but we wanna make sure that our chemical costs are being properly addressed. So we use a lot of chlorine, we use a lot of chemicals to treat the water that's out there. So CO2 and the like, just to let you know that. Also wanted to let you know, as I mentioned to you previously, that I felt that this year, twenty-twenty-three, needed to be the year that the administration, you know, gave a concerted focus on nuisance enforcement, code enforcement. And it's not to say that we didn't, you know, in the recent past, but we've taken steps to get to a point where now, you know, we have a team involved, you know, via SafeBill. We've hired a third nuisance officer through there. We have a code enforcement coordinator that drives the city on a daily basis, looking for things and acts as a feeder system to SafeBill of things that need to be investigated, looked at, cited. I know that we're being effective because we're getting a lot of phone calls of people that are not happy that they're being issued citations about not keeping their property up to code. We meet bi-weekly internally as a team, administration, SafeBill, to talk about, you know, what are you seeing in the field? Is there anything that we need to be taking account of that we need to bring back to city council? That we find situations that are untenable, but our current ordinances don't address. So you may, as we move forward, start to see some of that as we get out there. So I can tell you that one of the byproducts that we did, that we were able to determine in twenty-twenty-two by hiring that third nuisance officer through SafeBill, and that was done in like July, August of last year, training, getting him on board. You know, he was, that individual was tasked with patrolling the city and looking for contractors who were coming into the city, doing work without pulling permits. And we found two hundred and fifty, which is a fifty percent increase over those that registered. So that meant that we had five hundred that register, five hundred contractors that play by the rules, pull permits, have their work inspected, have somebody sign off at the capacity as a state official and say, yes, I certify that that work was done properly. And two hundred and fifty that we caught in a period of four months, it's fifty percent more. So as we look towards this year and construction in spring kinda kicking it up, you know, that individual plus our code enforcement coordinator will all be looking for this type of activity. And that results in, you know, when that work is found, that work has to stop until they come in and pull permits, pay the appropriate fees and fines, because if they've been working on it or even completed the work, there's additional fines that occur. And we hope that once they understand, let's just say we'll give them the benefit of the doubt, they understand that they have to register, that they will continue to register. But I suspect that we will have many repeat offenders. Many look at it as it's a cost of doing business, how many jobs they can get in to get done before somebody catches them. And if they only get caught on a couple jobs, that's how they look at it. Our code enforcement coordinator though, we will be doing weekend work so that entities that I've known come in on a Friday night and be out by Sunday afternoon to avoid full-time city officials that are going to have a plan for that this year. So wanted to make you aware of that. On just on rental registration, this is also part of our bi-weekly meetings. You may have heard me make some comments, I think last week on the radio, when we were called about it. We're up to a thousand fifty units being registered. We're averaging, to complete the registration to inspection cycle is running about twenty-four days. So somebody makes, registers and then they make an appointment for us to come out. It's all getting done and wrapped up within twenty-four days. So great turnaround there, going out and doing four to five inspections a day per person. Barty's also assisting in that to make sure that we keep our timetable down on that. We know that coming up here on January thirty-first is the deadline to be in the enrollment period, which was January first to January thirty-first. February first will start an enforcement period for those that we know are rentals that didn't register. You will be contacted by the city and we will talk with you about how you're gonna get into compliance. Those that don't, the fines on this accrue on a daily basis. And so it's really in your best interest to get registered. The types of things that we're finding, most I would say are, you know, smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors that are required to be there, that are not there. We've had a couple fires this year that were, we noted that smoke detectors, operating smoke detectors weren't in the premises. No one was hurt, thank goodness, but nonetheless, it is a requirement. And we think that there are those that are incurring a lot of cost. I think that a lot of the companies that make valves for gas pipes and water heaters and stuff are gonna get good business and a lot of electricians are seeing a lot of work. So in our initial discussions today, we felt that we were making, you know, very good progress. It's running very smoothly, that as we get through this February first period, I'm not quite sure how that looks, but if I feel, you know, at the conclusion of that, like I feel today when we come back to city council in the fall for that reevaluation of where we are and where we wanna go, I think it'll be easy for city council to, you know, make that policy decision if they wanna move forward with rental units that are in buildings more than eight units, that the city will be comfortable with pursuing that and doing that as well as we do what we're doing now. So just wanna give you that for the thinking about as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Patrick. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. These are the city administration working with SafeBill. We just feel that these are safeguards that have been overlooked for so long and we just wanna make sure our citizens are gonna be safe in their homes or in their new construction or old construction. So thank you very much, Patrick, for that. Just a couple things for me. Again, thank you for the participation of our residents tonight in the discussion that we had involving the master plan for twenty-twenty-three. in the discussion that we had involving the master plan for twenty twenty-two. Just to recap, on January twelfth, I had the opportunity to be a co-master of ceremonies with former State Representative Thomas West at the Martin Luther King, Dr. Martin Luther King breakfast, mayor's breakfast, put on by the Greater Canton Martin Luther King Junior Commission. And about five hundred people were there. I was very honored to be a part of that in celebration of one of the, of our country's really most remarkable leaders that we had. Also, on that evening, I had the opportunity to be on the winning side with Walsh University at the annual Mayor's Cup Challenge between Walsh University, our hometown university, and Malone University. At Malone. And poor Mayor Bernaby had to shake my hand about three times. The women's team won for Walsh and the men's team won for Walsh. And on top of that, we had a, between the two schools for one week, seven days. It was, filled the Mayor's Cup Challenge, and it was raising funds for both schools, for athletics or academics. And there again, Walsh University took first place on that. So, Mayor Bernaby humbly shook my hand. We returned the trophy to Walsh University. And those players on the men's and women's team were very, very happy to win that competitive competition. And that was a fun week for me. So, that's all I have for you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Wayne, I kind of see you over there. Do you have anything you want to add to that?
No report tonight, thank you.
All right. Ben?
I was going to talk about rental registration, but Patrick did that, so no report.
All right. Let's go to Ward one. Jamie?
Moving right along. All right. I want to, again, thank everybody for coming this evening, especially those of you who stuck out the entirety of the meeting. So, thank you very much. So, always good hearing from you guys. I know we didn't have much snow yesterday, but, man, the roads were great. And I actually saw a meme on Facebook that I thought I'd share. And it's one guy asking another guy, how are the roads? And the other guy responds, they're still there. And that, to me, is kind of what I think of here in North Canton. When anybody asks me, how are the roads? It's like, come on, it's North Canton. We got the best roads in Stark County when it comes to snow removal. So, just kudos to the people we have driving those plow trucks and just wanted to thank them. So, I believe that's all I had this evening, so that's it.
All right. Thank you, Jamie. David?
Okay. So, for personnel and safety, to Jamie's point, you know, having great employees, even roads clean. Ms. Farina was kind enough to send me a report. We have some additional employees at North Canton. We have a new administrative assistant, Danielle Swinehart. So, she started today. Comes from Wayne Homes.
Last week.
I'm sorry, you're right. It is one nine and not one twenty-three.
Close enough.
Yeah. It's that European thing, you know, where they put the date back. No, I'm just kidding. So, yes, she started January ninth. And then she has experience in training, H R, administration, and marketing full-time. She will be reporting to Ms. Farina. This position is backfilling the position where Tracy Knoll was promoted to administrative specialist operations. In the water treatment, we have a new water treatment operator, Gatlin Wire. Gatlin started today. He's the one that started today. Comes from the city of Alliance, where he worked as a water plant operator. He has four years' water treatment experience, brings his class-one water license from the Ohio E P A. Gatlin is full-time, reports to Mark Lighthammer. His position backfills a position Jesse Cotrell, who retired on December thirty-first after thirty years of service to the water treatment plant. And there's another testimony to the quality of people that we have. The fact that they stay for a long time in our city is a good thing. So, there's others coming in the future as we backfill or fill open positions, and I'll keep you informed on that. I would also like to thank everybody that came out tonight. So, when the residents speak, we want to hear what they have to say. Tonight's meeting was certainly a breath of fresh air in the sense that the audience here was full. We got to hear from people. I want to hear from you more often, so you have my name, you have my number. Please reach out to me. I told one resident that I tried to move into that neighborhood, but my truck wouldn't fit in the garage. So, when I was looking for a house, I had to go somewhere else. So, I missed out on that great neighborhood there. But Ward two is a great place to live. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Stephanie?
Okay. Really, the only thing I want to remind people is next week, and I don't know if you're going, Patrick or Mayor, but Ms. Farina and Ms. Wyrick, who couldn't be here tonight, reminded me that we are up for a huge award for our park system. Are you both going to go now? Okay. No, I know you're not. That's right, the mayor's going. So, our park that some of you mentioned tonight and the walkability and with that, we've brought in so many people from the community because it's a special park and has special needs, special needs assistance for those. And it's one of a kind, and the state recognized it, and we are down to the final three. Another entity is Columbus, and they partnered with like Ohio State and different people. And then Westlake, correct?
Both lesser communities.
Lesser communities, for sure. I think, I think the Columbus one had like all of Ohio State working with them. And Ms. Farina's like, uh, it was just us, you know, doing ours. So, we're really honored to have that and excited for that next Sunday or Monday, Monday, when we are in that meeting. So, I'm excited. So, Mayor, you have to like text us all immediately once you hear, and make sure you have video ready to go if they say our name. I want, I want live footage for our Facebook page. That's when they say our name, so. And we even get money if we win, so that's really exciting. So, congratulations to that department and everybody who worked on that. I think it's that Brian Hill's going and Kathy.
They're up there already. Oh, they'll be up there for a three-day seminar.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Okay. Thanks.
Nice. Thank you. John?
Well, I want to thank Pat for being on the radio the other day. I was listening to that. Very good. Mayor Wilder, thank you for all that you do representing us and speaking. And that Walsh-Malone thing, that was good to get everything back to us. We're of law. I feel that a lot of phone calls in the last week, week and a half, in regards to the master plan. And thank you to the residents who called me. They didn't make it, but it works out. I answer all phone calls, even if you don't live in my ward. I listen to you and go from there. But that's my report, and great job on the roads again. We raised the bar to the highest.
Thank you, John. Daryl?
Ten minutes?
No.
That's all you have? Hey, great night, in terms of discussion. But I want to, I would be remiss if I didn't return to one subject that came through the fire hose of reports. And that is, I think, our administrator deserves our acknowledgement for repairing a badly strained labor-management relationship that has now, the fruits of that repair work are now receiving the benefit from it. And that is through employees who are happy, employees who want to work here, employees who do a good job. And as Patrick has indicated, part of the way forward is to come up with creative solutions. But you can't get there if the troops don't follow. So, Patrick, thank you. It's a big deal. Any more minutes?
You can have twenty, don't worry. Okay. Thank you all for coming out. You spoke and we listened and we took action, and that's what our community is all about, so thank you. It's been a long enough meeting. I'll just end by saying bye and support local if you can. Final call for new business? Saying none. Moving on to the calendar. January thirtieth, we will have no meeting. February sixth, we'll have a committee of the whole. February thirteenth, we'll have a regular city council meeting. February twentieth is President's Day, I believe. So, we will have no meeting there. And then February twenty-seventh, we'll have a regular city council meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second. Second. Third, fourth? Oh, move. You said I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's moved. Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A motion.